Yeah. 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 Okay, I see them in. Second floor, sure. I'll have to check in if you're in because.
Is Dan there?
He's here.
Central Station.
It's not the seventh committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My name is.
Mine.
I'm. I got it.
Just a person learning.
I feel like we need to start picking small talk.
Learn again. Learn again.
Totally.
Yeah. Right.
Have you done the blowback?
August. But I've never had any big work. It's a surprise visit.
Found out that. His luck, so we have, we have. I'm saying to the jaws.
Yeah. Okay. If you want to be adult amongst everything. Well, that's not the point. So Shelley says she can't really understand what we're all saying. The visible space. So Shelley, can you hear us?
I can hear when like someone's speaking really loud, but and but like for the most part, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. And then, but.
Really far away.
Yeah, the microphone, it definitely like when you asked me the question, I could make it out, but you sounded pretty jarbled.
Well, we've just been kind of talking amongst ourselves so far. Maybe once we're just speaking one at a time.
Oh, good catch. No, you don't need that on.
Believe the mayor.
I call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for attending today. And do we need?
No.
Um, the agenda has us talking, just jumping right in there on the in the committee report. Since Torine is not available, who's going to get that report on the subcommittee?
The subcommittee? I guess we could join.
Yeah, so I think my plan was to read the joint statements, kind of drafted together. And, you know, and then, you know, add some other kind of impressions we've had about the committee meetings or subcommittees we've been having. And I think one of the agreements we've had is kind of what happens in the Valleydale Ballroom stays in the Valleydale Ballroom unless we agree upon. Because we wanted to create a space where we could express ourselves and opinions and thoughts in a this kind of space. So I'll just kind of go ahead and start reading these reports that we have. So this is from our first meeting with Marty, Shelley, Dan, Jamie, Lotta, Lori, and Traboo. We have to report their subcommittee meetings were very successful in bringing its members together. We shared a lot of laughs and reintroduced ourselves to a space more conducive for dialogue. We discovered that many, the many overlaps that are aligned, share personally and culturally. And even though we may not see eye to eye on many things, we still hold space for each other's truth. And Jamie and Lotta will discuss the concerns about the discourse of these meetings and have strength in their trust and respect towards one another's presence, perspective. And they may even play bocce or lacrosse together soon. Still looking forward to it. We also agreed upon our mission statement. Mission statement was the role of Christopher Columbus statue subcommittee. Shelby created dialogue from standing between the Italian-American and Native American community members, leading to enrichment and respect to one another's varied perspectives, which will then be carried to the people of the city of Columbus. The second meeting summary was on June 30th at the beautiful Valleydale Ballroom. We retreated to some authentic Italian meatball subs for lunch. We had more time to connect socially, share our cultural experiences and express our concerns regarding the Christopher Columbus statue. We connected with the statement, the empathy needs to be as big as the statue. It's a sort of goal. And this could be a new framework to view and design a new statue placement where the goal would be for the viewer slash community to identify with, understand others' feelings or empathize with others' viewpoints. We then discussed possible ideas of how to achieve this learning objective, like creating empathetic statements for our communities, supporting Italian-American Heritage Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day on the same day, possible exhibit layouts of statue and inviting museum and art exhibit designers. And they've kind of helped frame this idea and so many ideas that could help each other out. It is a difficult objective to achieve empathy and be able to put yourself into their shoes so it will take time and character. We both agree that incentives can be found in subcommittee, that that chance of statue could be placed and understood. So those are the agreed upon statements that we wrote together and to our subcommittee members to talk about their overall impressions that we've had.
Thanks.
So we obviously went a little beyond the issue of the statue replacement and talked about some of the other issues that are concerned on both sides. And I think that was very constructive, very helpful. Because at least from the perspective of the Italian-American community, this is just one of many things that's going on that is an insult to our community. So maybe be a little too strong, but that's how it feels to that people. And obviously, the Native American indigenous peoples also feel some insult to some of the things. I agree with Dan's statement and summary that we all agree that the empathy has to be as large as the statue.
That's one phrase. I wrote somewhere, but Dan said it was wonderful. I just want to say one statement, if I could be back please. Opinion is really the form of human knowledge. It requires no accountability and no understanding. The highest form of knowledge is empathy, for it requires us to suspend our egos and live in another's world. It requires profound purpose larger than the self-kind of understanding. And that was by Plato. We're sitting outside after that. Where we are, it's where we are.
An additional statement underneath that.
I did. I wrote that. I'd be around. It was just my, I just just elaborating on what that statement needs and what we thought about in meeting.
I was wondering about the second sentence.
Okay.
We, unlike the main CCSC committee, are personally meeting and embracing our similarities and differences as we are inspired to understand, design, map through this new world of whole understanding and acceptability. I wondered about your use of unlike the main CCSC committee. That caught me off guard. Frankly, it was a subcommittee, a smaller subgroup that, you know, members of this committee chose to become involved in. And the phrasing of that is troublesome to me.
Okay, thank you. May I explain it?
Yeah.
And I would be glad to change it if it's offensive. My reasoning was because the Native Americans and the Italian-Americans, they're kind of the foundation for this situation in many respects. And other individuals, and if I'm speaking out of term, I'm sorry, but I'm feeling like that is almost our foundation, our our kind of girth as these individuals, that that's where the so-called maybe insult is coming from. I'm seeing that others may be, it may be personal for Columbus, Ohio, but you're talking about a personal of a family heritage. Generations prior to us are coming from it, I think, in a different way than the classic Columbusite, the people that love it. And that's where that statement was coming from.
Yeah, and I could also add to that idea as well and said, you know, this subcommittee is also kind of has this opportunity where we can express our feelings more into some space versus like these have made primary meetings are being streamed to the entire city of Columbus and, you know, we all, it's it's stressful and such. So I think what we're kind of talking about in this statement here is the opportunity that we have in our subcommittees to speak more authentically and to simple ideas and see what, you know, what overlaps. That's what I got.
Sure, sure. It's like, I guess we, I see both of us are finding pride trying to make sure it's promised in future. And I know it's the homicide. Again, I'm not trying to offend anybody. It's just because it's us. You know, if it was, say, the Irish, maybe the Italians wouldn't be here today if it was that grounded generational kind of perplexity or the situation.
I, I, I think that we're unlike and be replaced by outside.
Just, just because there are so many of us that would participate in any conversation. It felt like the conversation that the two of you were having was so foundational that having you all meet first and then come back to all of us was so vital, but had we been asked to participate, we certainly would have known that.
Sure. It seems to me like the whole phrase is unnecessary. I, I, I don't think it's necessary. You're personally meeting and that's what you really need to say.
Okay.
I think you're leaving out a lot of some groups, including my own. So my own from, I'm from the East Side. I grew up in the same. And, you know, there are other, you are meeting about your own things. You can say you're personally meeting and skip the unlike the natives. I didn't say that. And I'm certainly not here to offend. Can you hear offensive?
We do.
There's a one more like, you know, point I'd like to add about the subcommittees. Yeah, the shared one, but this is my opinion. It's a first like to begin by thanking everyone for their extra time to make these meetings happen. And by the way, to organize and host, and thank you, Sotra Londa, her hosting us at the Ballroom, it was fantastic. And for exposing me to meatball subs from Tass Restaurant Tavilla. A lot of controversies we've had in these meetings. I don't want to start it more, but I think they have the best meatballs in town.
We sure as seen that, right?
We didn't go there. I'm sorry.
Then it's the home.
You know, me just trying to create controversy. For me, personally, these meetings highlight everything I love about intercultural experience, not just the food, language, art, and people, and the human connection, but the developed skill of empathy. And it is a practice skill to see the world through another's eyes and which in these polarizing times is often overlooked and more important than ever. So I believe this could be done, if done correctly, this could be a 20-foot tall exhibit to empathy and not so much a 20-foot black eye for a lot of people. The statue, here's my kind of pitch, what an empathetic framework placement of the statue would look like. This is kind of things to consider. So imagine a statue is a door or a reflective space like a library museum and surrounded with four panels of slightly tinted transparent glass to represent four different perspectives. Each perspective would be supported with a plaque of information, writing, images supporting Italian-American view, Indigenous peoples' view, a historical objective view, and finally, the middle and empathetic view. Now, it's important that we have these transparent pieces of glass or columns for two reasons. One is to literally force the viewer to look at the statue through a different color hue along with the supporting information. And this would represent seeing the world through another's eyes, so kind of almost forcibly doing some empathy and making a statement about it. The second reason for the glass is that the statue is tremendously challenging for a lot of people to look at it. For some people walking past it, it's a, you know, it adds a lot of images that happen to us. So we see this tremendously violent, see a lot of death and atrocities that happen in Espinola. So for a lot of people, it's very difficult to walk into a room and see a 20-foot tall statue of Columbus. So the glass might help break that visual tension when you're walking in a room and help immediately kind of like set the framework of these. And so we have these pieces of glass kind of thinking why the statue kind of went up from, you know, Italian records. Story, that struggle that they had at here and what that statue meant at that time, absolutely. And that just perspective is, you know, the, the opinions that we think, the story that needs to be told and why it still affects us today, but how colonization is still in this country's DNA and still so many parts of our lives. And the middle part is a statement of empathy. The middle part's clear. There's no glass. It's an opportunity or a statement where we kind of able to say that how important is to be able to have opportunities to listen to one another, to see the world through their eyes and then see how and have the other do the same and then meet in the middle somewhere and find where it can do no harm. This is kind of a pitch that I kind of brought to the last meeting, kind of thinking about. And I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the committee, what empathetic framework would look like. A lot of these, so this is a lot is coming from the intercultural knowledge and value rubric put on, what we're using to use, what we have to share, that kind of use the framework of intercultural language, culture, worldview, bias. So this could be, if done correctly, a 20-foot example of empathy, like the specifications are pretty specific. So just wanted to put that out there. Yeah. Thanks.
Do you have that written down somewhere?
What I just wrote? Yes, yes. I, I can send that to you as well with the intercultural framework. So for me, as an intercultural specialist, we have these rubrics to kind of express like, all right, how does this learning object meet empathy or worldview or cultural self-awareness? And to look at the two meetings we've had as from an intercultural perspective. The first meeting, we're able to establish, we come from different cultures, we view history and objects in different views. You know, we might have different news sources, we might have different history books, have different religions that shape our worldview. So the first meeting, we're able to establish different cultures. The second meeting, we're able to establish the idea of empathy through our culture. So unbeknownst to us, we're kind of following an intercultural development path of these meetings. I hope we get a chance to continue meeting, which we do plan on doing, at least on lacrosse and bocce.
Evidently.
Of course, of course. I mean, I may have to try other meatballs, so just to go, so I'll make old statements again.
Got it. So the, the intention is still to bring in a consultant to do the context analysis. Is that correct?
To write, to write up the context.
Okay.
To take the pieces that. They just have the bonus stuff?
Yes.
Well, there's light out there, so.
Oh. There's motion, maybe.
Everyone, this is Mark Ross, Dan. Mark is the planning division. And as the. Grieffully decided to come on this cruise with us, so.
Those of you that are joining us, we just have a light turn-on situation.
Very profound data that's going on.
Lights out.
Yeah, so I mean, basically, as we discussed before, we're not looking for the committee to write up what maybe goes on panels, goes on the panels, whatever that display is, but to identify and provide the art commission excuse me, with information that the committee feels strongly should be included, should be part of that discussion. It's a very specific kind of, I think, skill and job for people who do it really well. And, you know, that's what we would be looking for. And then as part of that, might be a consulting team that would also be an artist or someone who designs these sorts of, these sorts of pieces that would help to take the context and then also show it visually. I think, Dan, what you were just talking about, this is a really kind of helpful way to think about it, even if it maybe doesn't happen exactly that way. I think that you're providing some idea of the story that we want to try and then, you know, perhaps put forth as an outcome. Or maybe it ends up being that way. I don't know. I mean, it's, it's a pretty cool idea, but, you know, we just don't know at this point. What I was hoping to do, I, I mentioned earlier before everyone was here, that I think that is from my perspective as staff, we're, we're going over some information a lot. And, you know, I touch base with the chair before the meetings and I'm looking to try, I don't want to stop the discussion about the contextual criteria early, but I think we need to dig in and identify those items that are really important to this committee for inclusion and any, you know, and moving forward with, with the statue that, you know, you know, we talk about indigenous community, we talk about, you know, Columbus, Italian heritage. What's really important to make sure is included as part of that context as well as, you know, we talked about the city of Columbus. Columbus, you know. So I wrote down some of what our discussions were. And reorganized them a little bit again. It's like shuffling the decks for me at this point. You're all very welcome to just say, cut it out and, you know, I like this or I don't like that. But I'm just trying to get, help the committee get to a point of saying, yeah, this is the information that we would want the consultant to be looking at, that this would be part of the report to the Art Commission and the request for it to be included in RMP, that these specific things are expected to be part of the outcome of the piece. And and then I just want to, we received, I received an email from Marty. Marty, are you listening? Okay. You might want to participate in this conversation. And I'm happy for, I'm really glad that we got response from you and Shelley and Dan about the agenda. And I think you maybe think you're going a little bit too fast. Some accurate words in your mouth. But perhaps you'd like to talk about your your concerns with the idea of starting to wrap up the contextual criteria. I, I do think, I don't want to stop it prematurely, but I do think we have to dig in and identify those items or we're going to keep talking about it for a really long time. It doesn't mean the overall conversation, you know, other conversations aren't continuing, but at least we need to identify what are those things that are really important be part of the, be part of the statue if it's returned. So Marty, can you, do you want to add anything or Shelley or Dan again?
It was a statement that we all made together. And it was just in response to the. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
It was in response to that agenda. And the agenda item that that there would be a vote today and we were questioning about the vote today. We wanted just some clarification on those issues that we wrote in the memo.
Okay, so the idea, and Diane is definitely there to jump in, but the notion of a vote is if we're going to be talking about contextual criteria, it implies that we're talking about the piece being returned to the community, statue in some format being returned to the community. Or am I wrong about that? You know, we, we need to, and it's acceptable to say we need more time to think about it. It's acceptable to say, we tried to put in this, that does the committee agree to recommend the Christopher Columbus statue with accompanying, accompanying contextual criteria be removed from storage and cited on city of Columbus property? Because if, if that's the, the recommendation that we're tracking toward, other things need to be set in motion. I need to be talking to the director about money to hire a consultant to come up with this contextual piece that, that we've been talking about. We need to have meetings within the city of Columbus to try and identify a location near this piece might go. All of those things take time. And that's the direction that the committee really feels strongly about, you know, Diane, Ryan. I can, we can just bring that back as a, as a conversation with the art commission, get a feel from them as to whether or not that's something that, that would be supported. And I can start having those conversations with the director about, you know, it's an unplanned capital expense. So we need to, we need to say, you know, hey, we're going to need a consulting team, someone to help this narrative together, someone to design what the piece or exhibition will be. And start working on something like that. So that's one of the reasons why Diane, is there anything?
No, that's why that is, you've done a good job. And it seems to me that contextual criteria are focused on putting this sculpture back in a public safe space. And with your vote and your message to the commission and to Lori, we're going to be able to move forward with other necessities to make that happen, as Lori just explained. So that's why we didn't feel that it was really too too fast. The fact that we don't have a full committee is an issue. I see that. I didn't expect that today, but I, now that we've explained, I'd like to hear from Marty or any of you, your comments.
I think what's one of the concerns we have is just like, you know, if we all said yesterday, you know, would we lose control of what that context is, you know?
No.
It's like, I think a fear we would have is like, all right, we give you the yes and agree to put it back up. Then there's things that happen that change how this context is portrayed that would, you know, be rather comfortable, I think, it might have. So that's, I think, one of the biggest fears we have. It's like, you know, what kind of final say do we have? You know, when we have these consultants that pitch different drafts of this invitation, are we still involved? Because, you know, I like to have a seat in your opinion line whenever they impose and of course, I'll excuse my opinion. So it's like, it feels like I'm almost like letting it go out of our hands. That's the, that's the biggest fear that I have. excuse my opinion. So it's like, it feels like I'm almost like letting it go out of our hands. That's the, that's the biggest fear that I have.
For me, it's, I mean, I totally respect that perspective. I think we're at a point where we've all been working so hard towards this common goal that it's a decision to trust one another in that process moving forward. And, and understanding that if we have a subcommittee or we have members that are working with this consultant, that anybody on this committee is going to be very, very carefully paying attention to what the Italian-American community has to say, what the Native American community has to say, but what all the Columbus has to say about the stuff, the statue. I could write a book about the importance of the sister city relationship, right? And, and what it means to the people of Genoa and the conversations I've had in the community about it. And what I, what I love about the consultants and bringing that person in early in the process is I think it helps meld that conversation together in a way where everybody's moving forward with the same piece. So I, however, that if, if things went, went sideways with the consultant, I would be speaking up just as actively about sister cities as I would be about the Italian-American community or the Native American community, because we're all Columbus people who care about this city and want to make sure we're representing ourselves in the best way we can.
I would agree with Jamie's statement, that I think when we were brought together as a group, we were asked to work on consensus. I was actually kind of taken back by the vote to call them. There's over 70,000 people in Central Ohio who claim Italian-American heritage. So, I mean, we're two people representing quite a large constituency. But, so, from, and that's why we originally proposed and did have the additional subcommittee meeting to kind of move beyond some of those issues. While there was no opposition to inviting other people onto the committee, you know, representing a different community. So as a consensus, if the committee feels like you are headed in that direction, I would be totally supportive of the decision of the committee to say the statue will come back up. However, the committee will still have involvement in the development of the accompanying contextual context.
Yeah, I like that urge. And I think that probably not a bad idea to move this vote to the next meeting, so we have time to prepare and think about it. And also have, tell the rest of the committee members to be here. We have a lot of people who aren't here right now. And we just found out about this vote like yesterday. So I think that giving us time to, you know, one, reformat reformat that question to include that, you know, moving forward with the continued, you know, oversight of this committee on whatever drafts that might come out in that vote. Does that sound like an okay right here?
I think we, we need to think about what the process might be the involvement of the committee as this starts to move from a report to the Art Commission. I'm not exactly clear, except that I know that you will, you know, you'll definitely have opportunities to weigh in. You're not going to be cut off from it. It's not going to be true. The Art Commission has certain authorities by code, but they've always been very careful to take input, you know, from the community. But maybe, you know, I need to be talking about, you know, the Art Commission about formalizing that a little bit in terms of the committee's role as this moves forward. And I was a little hesitant, but then I wanted to push a little. Because I think we're at a point where, where we can do that. We're talking about context, we're talking about items as though the piece is going to be returned to the community in some form or fashion, assuming that, you know, people are comfortable with the contextual discussion that accompanies it, that shows the various facts and points of view from Italian-Americans, Native Americans.
We'll have both local and national. You know, there's, unfortunately, it's just there's so many different feelings and
Yeah.
and involvement in something. We have a very local context of the two communities here within Central Ohio and and the history in Central, which Doreen was amazing, giving us background and information on. And then we have a much larger context of a national, international overlay of what this Christopher Columbus represented, what what were the situations of Native Americans and colonization. So there has to be, I would think, that involvement, you know, I'm not trying to pull rappers out of the discussion, but the involvement of a consultant to interview all committee members individually and as a group and come back with, you know, a consensus or ideas that we could at least hear and provide the same type of recommendation that we are now if we do the involvement on the statue itself. In other words, I know we haven't had the statue early in the hour to make the decision, but we've been asked to make a recommendation. So if we're making the recommendation for argument sake that the statue should be returned to the public display, we would also like the opportunity to make the recommendation happen and where it's returned. I think that's all Dan's asking.
Where it's returned is going to be dependent on a lot of things, including where we have a property.
You can't put it in front of the eye in the middle of the intersection. Directing traffic.
But I just want to be upfront about that, because we, we don't know. And I know that, you know, it has been, I'm not sure where it goes. It's, you know, we've got some safety. I think that the context, the contextual conversation helps to also provide safety for a piece of public art, you know. And, and that's going to be, I think, really the most significant thing. But also how that manifests itself, you know, the space, it's something like that. It's, it's going to be, you know, we're going to sit down with City Real Estate Division, the Recreation Parks, and say, okay, this is what we're talking about. Start looking at your your land and your inventory and help us come up with some possibilities. My administrator, Mark Billis, has already sent out emails to Real Estate Division, to Recreation Parks, some other folks to start that internal conversation. It's more comfortable for me to walk into that internal conversation saying, yes, it looks like the recommendation is tracking toward returning it, but returning it with not just the statue and not just on a pedestal, but with other information. We don't know what that's called, like how that's going to physically be, but it will be more than just the piece itself, which I also think raises some of the comfort level city as to where it goes, because again, kind of opening up a dialogue and conversation, that would be discussion, dialogue down, some of the major reactions that people have is going to be really important. Which gets me back to the contextual outline. Like I said, I keep moving things around here, and I'm sorry, it gets dizzy. I even started moving it around again last night. My remote desktop crashed on me. But again, how national do we want to be? How local do we want to be in the conversation? And, you know, we're looking at this. I'm not going to go through it all. You've heard me talk about this a lot. If you could take this, and I can also email to you the PowerPoint from the previous meeting, which might be helpful to kind of line it up with and look at this, but start identifying, even if we don't know exactly where they go, how it's going to be shown, what we need to, what we need to include. I'm sorry, Marty.
No, no, no. I'm agreeing with you. And I was, and putting this together, I guess I have a question for you, Diana, just a little bit. My first question is, when you began the structure of speaking about your concerns to let it go, were you speaking on behalf of the Native Americans or on behalf of the, of the committee?
Oh, I think it was the, you know, behalf of the committee, you know.
This committee.
Yeah. I was just thinking that, you know.
So if we let it go, because, all right, so then that leads it to, so that's good. So that, that leads it to that if we all maybe just did some bullet points, just contextual ideas that we would see in the statements. We're not writing that, but we want to make sure that some of the things, whatever it might be, like, of course, it's going to be the gift from Genoa that the Italians are so strong about, that that was a gift to us. So that would be one of our statements. Everyone's going to have different statements. It doesn't matter, as we said earlier, where you're from, you love Columbus, and I'm talking about Columbus the city. And you may or may not love Christopher Columbus, and you may or may not love the Italian heritage standpoint, but there's so many things dealing with Columbusites that people would want to say. So I'm just thinking, if people had that assignment, a homework of just bullet point, some of these thoughts, we can kind of come together and, and pull some of these out. Yeah, that's a really important one. And then we have something to maybe go on, and we have kind of an understanding or a camaraderie among ourselves that, yeah, we are in agreement. Because so far, we've been individualized. We haven't come together as a committee and put some of this together and stand behind our words. And that's where we need to go next. That's one of the thoughts that they had.
And I think some of that's bulleted in here, and I caught most of it from the previous meetings. Yeah, I don't know if you have to do any more homework, because I do think most of it is bulleted here. I mean, you may use this as a, a guide and add to it if you'd like. But I think as a broad stroke, most of it is here.
Well, some of the individuals haven't maybe had a say.
Yeah.
That are on, I think that's where I'm coming from. This is great, but what did a couple of people that haven't been at meetings, what are maybe some of their thoughts that we hadn't thought about? That's really all. I'm, I'm not trying to make a case on it.
I, I agree with London's point. And, because one of the, I think that that's a great idea of having kind of, you know, for, for, for our next meeting is to have our committee members add more of their contextual bullet points that we need to add, because I'm not sure Shelley, you've already just got here, you know, she had too much time to articulate a lot of their positions and feelings and that. So looking at the primary context right now, it's, it's fair, it seems pretty one-sided, you know, from this view up here, in terms of like talking, and, you know, well, not so much one-sided, but there could be more talking about, oh, expanding upon what colonization, you know, is and how, why it's so important to talk about. And it's not just happened in Hispaniola, but in the same kind of a colonial mindset that went to Central and South America, that same kind of colonial mindset that went into North America. And we're still dealing with the negative effects of a colonial mindset with our people today. This is why this statue is, you know, so, so painful for us, is that we're still suffering the consequences of a colonial mindset where, you know, the powers that be take resources and abuse people for their own profit without consideration for what's running the world around them. And, and that's also kind of what, you know, this, we also bear in mind that the statue was looked at and this conversation was amplified during the, you know, Black Lives Matter movement in the past summer, where people are looking at our systems, looking at our, our system people. You know, what are the mains not vote? A lot of our systems are based off of ideas of, you know, slavery and colonialism and and we're reevaluating our art structure and policy at this time. So I think that part of the national conversation is also important, because if not, we're alienating all those people on the streets who say, we have a problem with the statue. And then it's important to make sure that that voice is heard as well. So it's,
Nice.
Yeah, that's the, I'm looking, so, you know, we talk about a lot, this idea of like, you know, the kind of potential bullet points to possibly put in, like, this is just like the tip of...
But that's my point.
Yeah.
We need to, we need to start filling that in.
Absolutely.
If we can, you know, I don't have the depth of knowledge that you bring from the indigenous community, the experience community, from, you know, Italian-American point of view, the immigrant experience of that. Jamie, more about the sister cities piece.
Can you send this to us as a document, as a word doc?
Send it as a word doc, so you can start filling it in. And again, this organization keeps changing, so don't get blown about that. But one of the things that came to my mind, listening to the conversation, we have to pick, we, but the most important things to be conveyed in whatever this art or exhibition or supplemental piece that goes with the statue needs to be identified. It's kind of impossible to be absolutely everything. But one of the things that we might be able to ask for in the consultant RFP is a team with some secondary curriculum development, so that, you know, I do think that what we're looking at here is the possibility of a truly teachable moment in our community that's ongoing. And if we have some sort of robust curriculum associated with it, it helps to continue the dialogue and the depth of the dialogue. And, you know, we can make it something that families can do on their own. We can make it something perhaps the classrooms can do, teachers can do. And that way, I think we really have an opportunity to talk more about those, those things that are important to.
I totally agree. I mean, I think that that's where the opportunity here is. And, you know, while it's tricky for us as a, you know, a commission to come together and figure out exactly what goes on on panels, if that's the direction we head in, it's at the statue. But if there's a website where, you know, it is linkable for, for teachers and families and other materials, I mean, we're really stepping forward in a way that I think represents what this city is trying so hard to do in, in listening to one another and, and coming together around something. And that's what I think is so special about the work he's been doing. And, and even our partners around the world have been having conversations about this too, and
Absolutely.
and how this process is so vital. So I definitely don't want to lose any of the really important contexts that everybody has to bring to the table. And I love the idea of the bullets, but I, I also think we have to figure out what we can, what we can get on a panel in, in a moment when somebody is in a park or something like that. But again, it seems as though we're heading towards the statue being returned in all these conversations or run the context provided. So I, I understand the, the challenge that Lori's gotten in coordinating the process for that, if that's where we go.
I'm also going to send you a link to something called Monument Lab, which Ryan actually and Diane talking about this summer. That's the summer, the first pandemic summer. And it's Philadelphia. It's, it's a firm that worked with, sorry, LA, the LA section. Monument Lab to do. Philadelphia, right, Ryan? It's, I'm not sure who they worked with in Philly, if they worked with the city or if they worked with anyway, what they did was amazing, that the Monument Lab people, they, they seem to do curriculum-based things. And they came up with a way of people providing information about the monuments of the city, you know, who's not there, who should we be honoring who's not there, what, you know, talking about things that are there, ways of expressing information, sort of guiding that conversation. It's, it's, you know, it's pretty dynamic curriculum sort of piece, but again, when it's about families, you can kind of go out and, and I think that, you know, they're, they're kind of a folk group and they're able to, I think, tailor things to what the challenge is that comes before them. But that's just one of the things that they're doing in Philadelphia, which resulted in this wonderful book and, you know, some pieces of public art cities. So I will send a link to that so you can take a look at it. And, you know, maybe we need to, like you're saying, think a little bit more broadly about what this consulting team might look like. What the goals are to come out of that.
Yeah, I, I love the idea of the secondary curriculum, because I think that one of the other sins about this statue or that this figure it does is that, you know, the way Columbus and discovery, quote unquote, of America has been taught in public education system, growing up, I just learned that. system, growing up, I just learned that you discover the earth was round, I was the first person here. And, you know, it's, uh, there's a lot of, uh, you know, I think this is that idea of a secondary curriculum of like, you know, possible lesson plans and critical thinking lessons, you know, is what kind of educators, one of you, is, you can definitely see it, like a high school writing assignment, you know, the situation is really resulting this figure and, and, um, in terms of like, you know, isolating what information gets put down, the thing that kind of comes to my mind is like, you know, answering those questions, you know, why it went up and why it came down, are kind of the two biggest ones that I, kind of stick to me. And it's important to realize why it went up, why the values that it held at the time and what that symbolized for people then and today. And then also the contextual context of why it came down, why.
Moving your arms.
You know, I love energy efficient lights, but they have their limits.
That's the sweet spot, where you're just standing there one back.
You can just do jumping jacks over there for the rest of the meeting.
The next time I'll run up on it.
But yeah, why it went up, why it came down. And I think that, you know, I think one, another issue that we might even talk about it never again, in terms of like, what happened on Hispaniola and colonization, you know, you know, we need to talk about, because, you know, with history, we want to ensure that these tragedies and atrocities don't happen again. Um, not, so the dangers of not viewing another human as human and the damage that can happen with that, is a continued lesson that, you know, we also need to like, bear in mind. And so we can say never again. This is why we have Auschwitz still up. This is why we have the African-American winching museum with hanging figures, uh, to, to remind us of what we're capable of, not capable. And, you know, to make this statement of never again. And I think that that is another kind of, I think we said it was a whole, all over, you know, that the, what happened, the way this colonization occurred here is something that, you know, we need to look at and so make sure it doesn't happen again. And maybe fix what's happening now.
I also think you're exactly right, but there's also things about Christopher Columbus that yet has to been discussed in this committee about the positives. You know, everybody is going with the negative of Christopher Columbus. There were positives. And, you know, we're looking at the 1400s. I mean, there's some things there that you have to kind of put in. The reality may not be right and may not be wrong. It was hundreds and hundreds of years ago. So there, we've, we've just not talked about some of the positives of Christopher Columbus and there were some.
Yeah, it's a, it's a groundbreaking figure and a tremendous amount of meaningful moments in there.
Why is he still here? After all these years, so many others have dissipated and maybe secondary thoughts, but. I think the great thing about having a consultant is that it's, it's somebody that can kind of come in and talk with the members of the committee and, and disseminate down the passion that is part of these conversations and how, how important it is to all of the individuals in this committee that it's communicated. And so, you know, I think the sooner, from my perspective, the sooner we have someone in and in having those conversations, I think the more comfortable we're all going to feel that the input is going to be a really good representation of, of the community spots. I was just wondering if we would take the temperature, not a vote, but the temperature of if people are leaning towards putting the statue back. And we kind of don't know that, what people are really feeling about it. We all think we're here for one reason. Um, but Dan has brought different ideas from the very beginning. We brought in Shelley and Marty. I don't know where everybody is, is thinking on this way.
Um, consensus is fine. Can we be quick about it? And, um, I think it's perfectly legitimate to speak a little bit more about what your feeling is, but let's, we've heard a lot of the reasons. So, um, if you'd like to voice, if you've been uncomfortable with voicing, how you feel about it now, and you can pass if you're not comfortable with saying that. London?
Sure. Um, yes, I would very much like to see the statue reinstated somewhere in the city. We'll be discussing that. And with criteria, that was a year ago. I, I think that's really important. It can't just go back as it was. It can't, because people will dump pain on it. They have to be educated. And that is one of my concerns, that we're still not educated.
Jamie?
Yes, I would like to see the statue returned to public display within proper contextual, the proper context of the, uh, communities for you resolving.
Jamie?
I would also like to see it returned, uh, with comprehensive context and a reflection a bit on the value of the Sister Cities relationship that it began and what has had come.
Dan?
Not sure. Um, and I'm leaning towards, yes, which is pretty outstanding. I, going into this, uh, committee and being a longtime Columbus resident in America, it's, I wanted to see that statue come down for so long. I wanted to see it removed and I wanted to see it destroyed in terms of what else. And I've, it holds so much anger for so many of us, also so much shame. And why I'm, so it's pretty outstanding for me to come here and, and think, you know, about putting it back up and what the benefits of it. And the precautions are, if we do it wrong, it's a continuation of a lot of pain for us. And it's hard for us to risk it without certainty, right? Before I, and probably understand my intention, because I do believe it is possible to put this thing back up and be possible healing mode for a lot of people. Uh, but I also know it's going to take a lot more communication for, uh, just communities to kind of talk the rest of Ohio, you know, the other communities here, industry people here on the file, to see how they feel. Uh, because a lot of us still just want to see at least statues, you know, torn down. But I think a lot of us, I'm mostly surprised by so many people saying, we want our story to be told. We want to be listened to. So I need some time to think about that, uh, and the, the clarity of the, uh, you know, the context. Uh, some of you, uh, that's soft enough.
Thanks. I know that was hard. No, and thank you for putting your mind for the last couple of months. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm lucky. And thank you for sharing, you know, yeah, I know you, it's a difficult position for you to sometimes defend, you know, for a lot of people and it's a lot of, for Kailan Way, people. Um, and I think there is a possibility, but I'm a pretty over-minded guy. I try everything.
So the main context is critical. And I think about not just the current, but also the future, because the way we view history, we're always reevaluating. And I would like that to be taken into consideration. Marty, are you able to, um, hear this conversation and respond, you and Shelley?
Um, yes, I've heard, uh, yes, the answer is yes. Um, and we did talk about this, um, last meeting and in our, in our session. Uh, and I heard it echo, so I apologize for that. But I, um, I do not have an unequivocal answer, but I do want to say, suggest that I think balance is important in the context. When we, um, unequivocally celebrate the effects of, uh, the history of Columbus, we, um, ignore the effects of, on the New World and, um, the indigenous people. And this is not accurate. And when we focus only on the effects of the indigenous people and the New World, um, that also is not strictly accurate. So I think it will be, um, a difficult task to reach that balance, but that is what our con- conversation is around. And I'm hearing more and more about that from some of the members on the committee. And I would embrace that.
I'll go next. So at this moment, like, even before I joined the committee and, and, you know, and Dan, uh, was kind of keeping me up to speed in, in, in a, you know, in a basically, um, you know, conversation around the Columbus statue. I've been working on the Columbus statue issue for the past year, um, in regards to the indigenous community here in, in the Ohio area. And, you know, the goal last year, especially when the, the statues basically did come down, was to create the space and this dialogue and was to create the conversation so that, you know, people are heard, because it is true, what, you know, some of members on the committee has, has spoken to already, is that, you know, it's not always about the statue itself, but that the values and the understanding that the statue plays in relation to life as we know and live today. And so a lot of communities, a lot of people of color, wherever you're from, in regards to just being a human being, you're impacted by figures and you're impacted by the world and how it shows up currently. And so there are a lot of people who want to be heard. There are a lot of people who want to be listened to and who want to tell their story in relation to their thoughts and perspectives about specifically the Columbus statue and the impact that it has had on their lives and their family's lives and, you know, their grandparents and their parents and so on and so forth. Um, and so with that consideration and, you know, and also recognizing, you know, somebody said it, you didn't say her name at the beginning, but you definitely talked about reevaluating. I do agree, you know, like, the world is constantly in transformation. And so when we're looking at this, if in fact it does, you know, we come to the consensus of it going back up, that it is, you know, looked at, that it can change over time. And maybe it does change to be something, you know, something where it does look at as the first step. And then eventually, you know, maybe a hundred years down the road when our children are rainbow children or they are, they are at a point of unity, true unity, in the, in, in the fact that, you know, there's no race lines and there's no, you know, constructs and the world is better. Maybe it could become something better. And so I feel like, you know, in this moment in time, um, you know, I don't too have an answer in relation to, you know, us coming up with the contextual context and making sure that everybody is heard and everybody's thoughts and ideas are considered when it comes down to this, you know, statue, especially those on the, on the committee, but more importantly, our communities and, and who, where we come from and who we represent. Um, it just seems like, you know, in this day and age, inclusivity and, um, diversity are very big buzzwords and a lot of people don't actually live them out. But I feel like that's an opportunity here for us is to, you know, do the most inclusive approach that we can do, that would ultimately benefit, um, the process here that we're currently involved in. And so, um, those are my thoughts. Um, thank you for your time. And with that, I'll close.
Very much, Margaret. Um, I guess it's my turn.
I, I would say that, um, it's very clear to me that, uh, and always has been, the public art is very powerful. And that the symbolism of each public art piece is to be, uh, thought about and considered by all. So I agree with, um, several of you that the context, um, that accompanies it is critical. Um, and that we remember that while we do our best job now to place it somewhere respectable with that context, that believes in all sorts of visions toward that piece, that 15 years from now, it's going to change and it may not be as important in 15 years as it is now. So that we just do our best to, um, place it and to perhaps, um, engage artists who can help us have a living and, uh, ongoing view of what that sculpture represents. So that's my pitch. Um, is that consensus helpful to you, light us?
Okay.
Thanks for doing that. To move on, we're, I think it's been a very valuable conversation today. Um, and I know that we are not hearing from the entire committee, unfortunately, but I'm grateful for those of you who could come today. Um, the general site recommendations, you know, we were at 10:20. Do you want to talk about that a little bit, or shall we just use this outline to, uh, put like some of the outline, site recommendations?
Yeah, and the, um, PowerPoint from the previous meeting, we have with how to also, okay, um, what has been talked about in the past is, um, a location that, that allows for some contemplation, through, uh, thoughtful reflection.
Right.
And, you know, in terms of, excuse me, saying that, sculpture. So that's going to, some of that's going to depend on where it goes, you know, that, you need to find a proper site for a sculpture that they, and then the additional information with us. For me. Um, but if there are any other things that you think that you've considered with regard to, um, the site, the location, um, visual amenities, I mean, could be associated with that, then let's just jot them down. Um, when you're taking a look at the, um, the outline that I gave you, just kind of add some locations about that. That would, that would be good.
It'll also give a chance to those who weren't here today, too.
Yeah, and it's just, there's a lot of unknowns.
What do you think? You said visual amenities and you said two more.
Whether.
It's a large piece, so it needs to be in a space that, um, can be comfortable to look at it. So it's going to have to be a large space.
It was eye-opening to me a few weeks ago when we installed the Maker's Monument and the short law and then some, a 2% for art piece associated with the High Street Streets Game Improvement Project, which was like, I don't know. It went from, um, basically the convention center up, um, to like eight, um, district. Mark Riggleman did this piece, the crystals. If you haven't seen it, it's at Hubbard and High, where the Grayson apartments are, it's kind of in front of the parking area with the sidewalk, it's wide. You go down the street, you won't miss it. Um, and it just, it's crystals that just sort of explode above the ground. And then it has pieces or it has items that are cut out. Space is cut out of the piece to create, um, silhouettes of items that were made in Columbus. Everything from, you know, DeLorean commissions. It's production line here to, there was a, a toy manufacturing, so there's rocking horses and, you know, Jeffrey lining, all kinds of stuff in there. It's, it's really interesting to look at and identify what's there. Child. It's, 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 you know, it has to go big, where's Waldo? Um, there's like 50 different items in there. But it's almost 20 feet tall. It's around 19, 20 feet tall. And it's about a plant, it's about whatever it is. And, um, And, um, and it works in a smaller space because initially I was thinking, oh, you know, 20 foot tall statue. It's really finding the right place for the piece with the additional information that will be with it. So we might not need like a huge location for it. Sometimes you got a field or something like that, but it might, it might be able to slide into an urban area if there's enough room to, you know, have the other contextual information, whatever form that comes in or, you know, some smaller park area if we're looking for a more quiet location for it. But I think it's, you know, it's, it's interesting. If you haven't seen it, just go take a look at it. Think about the tallest crystals, about the height of the Christopher Columbus statue. And the, and the piece, the diameter of the piece is, is at least as wide, if not wider than the Christopher Columbus statue. Because there are all these crystals that are sort of coming off of it. And it was, like I said, it, I did have a moment where I was like, oh, okay. This is really big too, here in South Street. So there may be more options than what we're thinking about being appropriate for the piece.
I think the big up for issues indoor. Is it publicly accessible at all times or is it lock and key?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I think when you start getting indoors, you have outdoors, at least if you're looking again, you know, and over on the South Plaza, Port-au-Platola, looking at the piece because of maintenance issues, you have to kind of step back and look at things. You need to have that elbow room to step back and look at the piece, you know, just looking at sections of it in terms of an artwork. And that makes it a little more challenging, I think, for indoors, but, you know, maybe not impossible. But we need to get that conversation going, I think, in the city as to what are some potential locations for it, knowing that wherever it goes, it will have additional information.
And if there's enough, it, um, the amount of in, additional information, it could be very challenging, so you have to be comfortable in thinking of all.
I mean, I'm in favor of outdoors, you know, public display and for, for both reasons, both for the contextual piece as well as for the statue itself. But I know there's been some discussion of different locations, just won't mention.
And one of the benefits of like, you know, having it, you know, indoors is the, you know, it's a more reflective space, you know, and although bearing in mind the, you know, the reflectiveness of the area. So if it's not like a, in the comments, it's a pretty salvatory, you know, area, but if it's a library museum, art museum, gallery, or, you know, space like that, it, it better situates a, the, the context and one, the viewer's reflective experience. So people are quiet in the library and people are, you know, quiet in a history museum. And so if you're lighting, you can light a lot more. So if you want to do a tint of red or tint of blue, symbolizing perspectives on the statue, visual perspective, play with that a lot more.
It occurs to me right now, I, I'm bringing this up and I think it's kind of controversial. Placement is, the location is also important. We're all kind of talking as if it's very neutral territory. If it becomes a piece in a government building, for example, it, does that lend the piece more power? And I think we'd like, we should probably think about that when we have more ideas about where it could go.
Yeah. That's a good point because, you know, if you put it in a history museum, it kind of more of an artifact. If you put it in art gallery, spaces in terms of symbol.
Right.
So you have to be mindful of like, if it's being put, you know, you know, are we, we're in that, so bearing in mind that.
Yeah. And I think accessibility, I mean.
Sure.
You know, we want everyone to be able to experience the statue, but also the context that accompanies it. And if that's limited to a space that's restrictive or has admission or it makes it, it makes it a much smaller audience or for that experience than what I think, or what I would hope we would have in the conversation.
I think we're, my mind is always pretty full when I leave these meetings. Given that we do miss our other people, I suspect we should make another meeting time.
Well, we do have one more scheduled, um, which is August 12th. Will be here and I'm, I'm expecting that we'll be told that you have to be here, you can't virtually, but I'm going to do my best to try and make that happen.
I wouldn't be on a daily basis.
I probably wouldn't be too.
Should we look to move that to September? Take a look.
I would be available next week or any other time in August.
Yeah. It depends on which room it's in.
Oh, okay.
We move it to September. Give you time to put that information together. And then we won't meet in August, we'll meet at, what is it, the second Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday, today's Thursday?
Yes.
No, this, yeah, it's September 9th. Yep, I scheduled it here on the night, 19th.
I don't know, is it still at 9:00 AM?
Yes.
And would, uh, should you be told that we need to be here? I'm willing to make any changes that we need to make sure that Marty and Shelley can attend. Thank you for your excellent, excellent work.
Thanks for having this wonderful meeting. It's just a moment, it's almost been so hungry, but to be a matter of course.
Long overdue conversation ever.
Absolutely.
Having you not here, thank everyone for their presence too. Your emotional truths are really important, so appreciate your, your presence.
I do have a general question, Shelley and Marty, maybe you can help me out with this. Kind of the mound, the, where the grounds were raised on the south side of Bicentennial Park. You know, is that part of one of the original mound, mounds near Mam Street? Is there anything that shows where those mounds were before the bomb happened there?
Yes, I believe there are maps of pre-city development that shows where.
Where the bound, now.
Where they were before.
Okay. Yes, I will look, I will look that up. Thank you, I was just wondering. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.